Educating, informing, serving. Fact TV, keeping government honest. You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the town of Grafton Select Board Meeting.
Hi, everybody. Four weeks later at six o'clock on December eighteen, twenty forty-three, uh, January the thirtieth. Somebody made a motion to the top to be dead, to be dead.
I'm moving.
Any discussion? Not, you know, there is with your eyes, not opposed. Uh, we have one set of which of the camera set. I'll play it in any business. No. If not, somebody made a motion for seven minutes and three minutes.
Don't move.
And they were saying, aye, aye, opposed. All right, we have the two bids from the board. The one place that is down home, so we can do the, well, these guys, I think, probably, uh, this was a part of the election, but some of us support. So, how much, how many more in town?
I have it here. Do you have any just? Yeah, only one. Yep.
And what was, there were two options, were there not?
There were, uh, to use, to replace just the ten feet in front of the post office. Using reclaimed granite is two thousand dollars, using new granite is seventeen hundred dollars. Replacing the full curbing forty-five feet long, using reclaimed granite is six thousand dollars and using new granite is fifty-two hundred dollars.
One hundred thousand.
Was it ever extreme though?
Well, it's a way to go.
Yeah.
Yeah. But the most, the retail is more expensive, right?
Uh, yep, reclaimed is more expensive.
What do you know? The, 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 oh.
I'm fine with the name.
I think it's, 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 um, all right, so if somebody wanted to make a motion to, to replace the whole building, the, the new granite?
I'll make that, I'll make that motion.
Um, but maybe if you play on the name or granite, do you know?
Handle noise, what is it with the new? Six thou?
Uh, fifty-two hundred.
Fifty-two hundred.
That looks, well, you don't have to. Any discussion? Get the hell out. All favors say aye, aye, opposed? I might need, uh, you. The very, the one, that's the one. For, 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 for. Changed.
Get up. Definitely get up. I'm having science. I have to work the day. Um, other than that, um, first. You did, you did the, the last part of the high priority is. You'll have that. A lot of the sound. You're using a theme. Do all these things. The. Here, Mark and Anderson, we can give the funding, you know, let's push the rest of that out there. We think they're trying to do that.
Well, let me go with the God. Um, here's really is the. Really, really. But we're gonna. And, um, in the past, they have installed the God. Some reason, by the way, he was sold. Doesn't want to solve without the God. Grounding. And they will install it. If we give them the word. That it's okay, but it's, it's a violation of the DLP. So my, I think that's. Can't do that. I mean, that's like putting suicide because you now if you've done something wrong about this, I mean, as an accident, happen would be going to life. Fairly is. Eight thousand dollars more. And we didn't, that we didn't budget that. Probably we had a choice. Twenty. The future, we'll take how you do another one. We make sure that we're doing that with. Yeah. I don't know why, but it's not because of our own. Some of them. But if everybody's on. Some reason for them to be maybe being twelve songs is they're very. If I'm gonna have a. I'm gonna be dealing mostly with. Have to spend eight thousand dollars for. The acres for this one. How important they are. And like. It doesn't mean anything else, so. I will do it. Okay, you have got a.
Uh, my great, I want to listen to that. The border is, um. They have lots of games, but over the back. Pretty much I'm hoping for lots of stuff, a few things, you know, are gonna be some giving. We hope to call your friend out during time also. Uh, yeah, some of those border leaves are. Something that they're dating once in years, but let's see, you know, a hundred percent, sometimes a hundred and six percent. Depends on like. The campaign pass. It's really hard to take a guess what county this is gonna be, just something for you to think of us and. We're gonna do a little lot, though, we're gonna.
There we go.
They are just, well, they figured out what it is, but it is what it is. Their thinking is spreading out. No, because I, we had a four one two, like, my entire request to fully enter the homeless like.
Thank you. Yeah, but when they don't. Yeah. No, you know, it's.
Right. They will.
Hi. Sarah.
The focus is there, we have Sarah. If you're gaining your money. Cause I feel like.
Just don't be.
Because at the time, my good people had four of the twenty four of the clothes and two of the very ones. But always. Were to be put into the goal. Of that we've done, you know. And then the pallet is the only thousand hundred because. One pallet was used for the flood. Two pallets were delivered to this over. Or they don't embrace, and that's why it's so fine right now. I don't know of anything else that was to fix. I just went for. He did know the other line, yeah, she did use some of. Like, um, eight eighteen inch over eighteen foot, eighteen inch over, it's going to, um, what?
Right.
And the rest were to remain there, 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 there. Um.
Focus there. We will.
Now, you're getting burned, right? You, you shouldn't have. They just have your logic to the table, to the table.
Right, so we go to the stop. You keep, just like, we're keeping, so they're gonna stand there. He ordered them for extra supplies, so they're already there. All right.
We kind of work them.
That's our supply. What you.
I'm gonna say that just long as the, the.
Yeah, but I don't. I think you probably as if you're pulling out for me.
Right.
Not using those.
That's, we, we eighteen hours, but they do sixteen hours. There's just not to be pulled out.
They are, they are, they originally, so they're not carbon, isn't it? Cause this actually bill was about like ten thousand.
Oh, okay.
But we pulled out the eight eighteen inch ones. And that one actually what? Eighteen inch ones.
What, what is that?
No, that figure is really well taken. That is the four twenty four inches, and that is the two thirty inches of one pallet.
But the sixty dollar.
Right.
Exactly. Yes, it is. Because we ordered them.
And this is. Look, it's. Fuck. We need to end up. I can't. If you, if you really like any more forward, because we don't need you, you, you need that final stop. Good, but I mean, you gotta have a focus in the three minutes, and the one you're meeting here. Yeah, here. And for that, we can wear. I don't know about it. What about, what about, what about? I just find it here, so. I mean, we're, we didn't, we didn't just run off. But I understand, I just feel each other, and it's one thing. Some of this, they keep, uh, we ended the game, but, but you don't know how many of those sports, and then you don't know how many of them. You gotta have a fair amount of. You ran.
That's on.
That is made of a special cloud, you need to deal with that.
It has to be before.
On the head of the page.
Has to be before Halloween.
Yeah.
Has to be within sixty days of. Day we received the petition, which was August thirty first.
On the very one hundred and thirty second of. Over forty six, six P M.
No. Where are we gonna have to hear? At school.
That's gonna have to be, um, a decision you guys make, I know that. Typically, for fifteen, it's a max here. We're gonna get more than fifteen. Are still reading the first one. No one could have had it, we are. Our second meeting, yes, we could have had it, it's. It's a gamble, so I'm leaving it up to the board. The guy's silent.
Well, we have, we need to make the two pallet.
It's all available, if even slow, it's one we didn't shut down.
Do you think more than fifty people show up?
I don't know.
I don't know. They really do, but.
I mean, if all the people on the petition show up, that's thirty two. Plus the regular people. I, I bet it'll be, I don't know, I'm sure it's gonna be close, but.
It's.
It's, it's definitely easier, but. If.
I can't imagine.
Yeah.
We only get, we only get eighty. Right. And if you can imagine. Since eighty, you're coming up with stuff.
Okay, so we'll have it here.
But they don't have it. Yeah. You checked everything in that.
So I. Yep, uh, Dave Ross and Wendy are available for that day, so they'll both be fine. Um, I did write up the article in the warning, and I sent it to V L C T just for them to look at it. But just so you know, I tentatively wrote. Article one, shall the town of Grafton replace the current yield sign with a stop sign at the intersection of Route one twenty one east and Route thirty five south in Cambridgeport? So it's pretty straightforward.
We also, we also need to check that the J P is, because they need to be there, the best that somebody asked for the balance.
Okay.
Some of the J P, right? I mean, can we get J P there somewhere?
Well, as long as the, so I took part in the J P office, so you should still. You don't.
But what are you wanting? And you'll be. Let's see.
Sample project.
Then.
So I'll just wait to hear back from V L C T to make sure that's fine, and then if everyone could stop in to sign the warning. Then we're, we're good to go.
Oh, you do that. I'm leaving tonight.
Okay.
Why don't we all sign it now? Once it's a three of us. And then if, if rip it up, it doesn't work.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah.
I'm making. I'm making motion to have the P D out on October twenty sixth at six P M here. In the town hall.
Second, I have. Any other discussion? We're not all favored, having the meeting here on October twenty sixth. P M. Uh, sometimes. Now, here, this is.
Hi.
Uh, we have taken the money, the money that I, to accept it. In case. Done the budget process, and, um. I believe in the preparation, okay, that the sixteen. Who will have a five o'clock meeting prior to this landmark meeting, but, um, five. Cambridge. It's a big, big. Two point five P M. Channel. Need to bring channel budget. We have to. And what I'm doing immediately. You have.
Yes.
We don't have the other one, so.
I, I checked with Rich, and he said those are all fine. Yeah.
The children.
Okay.
It doesn't. We don't.
Yeah. Why did you?
I did, but I haven't heard anything back from any, any of them.
But the, the tricky one, working that way on top of this.
I asked her to let me know as soon as possible if it doesn't work, so. I'll let you know.
Uh, Kobe's here, Kobe. The week of October ninth, other than the tenth, do you have time to meet with me and Kathy?
Yeah. Kind of worked out.
Yeah. Um.
I checked with Mike, um, Thursday, the twelfth.
We already, we already met with Mike, I don't.
Oh, okay.
She just can't do it. How about, um? How about the night to eight A M?
It's a holiday.
Oh, that's a holiday, no, my site's closed. Uh, how about the eleventh? Go to eight A M.
Yeah.
Just, just do it, just do it at my office, there's a one. How about you, Warren, you wanna go there today?
Yep, that's fine.
Let's just be at nine.
Okay.
Good. So the next meeting on the second, that's okay, I'll.
Yeah.
Uh, any other questions? Um. If you have any. So. We're already just. Perfect meeting. Rather than dousing in Austin, you're blocking my.
What?
Nope, I haven't heard anything.
Okay. Um. Yeah. Um, have the result of the last. Fifty percent of the data. Financially, it's showing that we're over five million dollars. Financially, this project. Do you have any funds or? Doing. Project funding. And what, what about ways that done, that not even thinking about it? I mean, there is, we don't even know what are the streams. You don't think it's. Might be right. The other part is. It's only stretching. We need one. That now is. To be, they're not to be alongside her. Well, that's a very good question, but, um. Seth and I have been going back and forth with, uh, the state. And quite frankly, um, they don't know what they're doing. Um. They originally said, well, how to do it, then I said, you don't have to do. Uh, waiting for a, you're going to the correction. We need eleven times sitting. Personally, I'm against it, unless there's some. Some reason. Uh, that would be hard, but I would. You don't have to. But, um, we. We get some, we don't have anything, anything more than. Um, you know. We need that. Um. If you look at the fifty four. Entities that are involved within the village. I'm guessing about twenty five of the same goes with the foundation. How? When it comes down to a vote, if they get a vote of just one of their holdings, they can go. One of them.
We're sure. We asked the Vermont League Cities for the legal opinion on that. Has to be. A registered voter who can vote at the town meeting. That's what votes in the fire district.
Well, that'll be mine.
Well, no, he doesn't live in the fire district.
Well, that's.
He couldn't, you have to live in that district to vote.
Then I. It's ten people. Breaking.
That's the.
Um. The only thing that popped down when I put major pitch. Um. Isn't the fact that a hundred thousand dollars set aside. I wonder if that puts you personally. Either that or. It's very, really only one. Standard profit to use. I'm not telling you. You're sure. I, I'm not gonna give it to her, I'm not gonna. They use. But I'm not. And I'm not gonna get in the air, and I don't expect to bother you with that. Okay. Well, that'll get, I'm gonna give you one, okay? There's a lot. I have to. So, uh, I wouldn't even worry about it. But I, I, I have, I've been. You forced this to vote fairly quick. The one. He said, oh, we're not. Here. I don't know. Tell you that that was a movement in another. So. I'm. I just wanted you to know, yes, but. You can't just keep saying, well, no, no, we don't, no, we don't, no, because. People are alive, but it's just. You're making. I mean, you. You understood them, like, it's I understand. That. They said we have to do a water study. They're gonna put away whatever at home. If we don't want to go. Then the waste water, if I had control. And then the next, the next meeting would be the ninety percent. And then that one. Be serious about dollars. Again, hold on there. If this comes through a vote. You need everybody to. And if it's stopped, we don't want this, cut it up. That means you're. Yeah, dog, I don't know. You don't. About. Without the study, you should. You should be able to, um, hear the study, hear what the results are, and then the position. Make a decision by a few. That's the power to do it. Now, um. A long time ago. But well, currently, I think the whole. The physical process of. How we need to set up a special district. Within this village. Um, which I guess the village here is finding to say. Well, there's a. You have to do that. It's not a question that we want it. We sit by law. Okay, so now they have the board. They don't like it. If somebody wants to see what happened. They don't.
They would only be there to manage that system. That fire district would be there to manage that system. If it ever came into existence. Water or the wastewater system. But there's all, there's, there's different ways you can set it up, too. So these are all so far down the road hypothetical. Questions really we're talking about, because now. What they want to do is they want to go and, and possibly do a water study, which we'd have to vote to approve the money for that. Which we haven't done. So, and this all took us, we've been involved this by surprise. And they said they'd want to do the drinking water. Initially, they told us, like Joe just said, they didn't want to do the drinking water. Then they told us that, basically, that we had to have a drinking water, but it's planned. And that was the day of the meeting.
Yeah.
And, and now we're just waiting to hear back from them again.
Yeah, this is. Looking for, maybe it's just what I want to do. But. You have the time to give one board around the committee. No, I just feel like, well, so, but just like we gave to the jury. It's, well, it's a question now. Because the money is funded through a grant. But the point is, is that we want to be, we could have found a goal. Do with water, but they haven't even completely agreed. Right wing is. That's the. Bottom reason. Yeah, but until it's made together, if you got a handle. Yeah, it will, at the moment, we're very. Yeah. Of two hundred and twenty. And so the law has been trying to do this.
You're dealing with two different committees of the state, you know, two different transit, so it's frustrating us, too. Very frustrating.
Very good.
So at what point do you have to form a district? This is just. It's a, they, they have to be formed to be born. A vote case.
Well, the town, the vote, the, the entire town, it's a vote creating files. And that's a townwide vote. Now, I forget that way, like. The bill is based on terms that. You create a violation. Then. Then you have to have the vote of the, of the district. To approve the budget.
And then just. And say it doesn't pass through the district, it's the district that is all, because.
Well, then the whole party goes inside of it.
You have to go. More than creating a district. In order to see the votes moving forward.
They would have to vote on. Members who would live in the district have to vote on the. They won't be part of it.
Okay, so we have to go through all.
I don't know if we have to create the district first or not, I don't know that.
Okay, that's. Then again, okay, so what if this, this was called. Petition or vote somehow. For that vote, you have the authority to challenge it, because it's out, or it's not, you'd be able to.
If I had to combine that condition, if they give us. They give a special petition, like they give a stop sign, then.
And it's kind of. There's no such thing as.
Right. I don't know. If that's cool, it's a better thing. I mean, if that's, I don't know, I mean, we should give a, we end up. You always have the. That's not taken away from it. Anything else, huh?
I, uh, Joe, this is Charlie Bonin. Um, Seth has, uh. Been kind enough to share with me some emails. Uh, regarding this water district. First of all, I have to say this. I can hear Seth perfectly, I can hear Morgan perfectly. And I, I, I know this sound system has always been an issue, but I, I can't hear anybody else, including you, Joe. Sometimes you just go. All, you can't hear anything, it just stops. Um, so. I, I know, I know, I know, but, uh, you know, it's, it's a public meeting, and we're talking about something that's important, which is the water in the town. And nobody can hear anybody. But, but that, that, that being said. Let me just say what, what I have done. Um. As you know, I've written the state. Uh, and they have responded. And, um, the person that I have been writing is now on maternity leave, and so I've been writing to someone else. And there is the engineering company that. Yes, they started the whole water question. And then there is the state that is responding. To me because of the PFAS in the water, in the well. Now. I have suggested. To the state. Without a response. That. Forget about this, uh, fire district that has to be set up. With all the expenses that go with it. Why not just? Um, monitor the town wells. Uh, the, each residence wells in the, in the village area. And those that fail. Put in a, a, a filter system in the home, which has got to be much less expensive than setting up. This, uh, fire district and trying to find a place to provide water for the whole town. Uh, I will tell Seth, well, all of you, that I haven't received a response to that. Query.
Charlie, when we meet with them, we can ask them about that. When we finally have that meeting, we're supposed to meet with them, I think, sometime this week or next week, so.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Seth.
Do you have any comment? The. Make sure you'll be. He's on holiday, I hope it's second. The lady will.
Still move.
On the day of.
Hi.
Thank you, everybody.
This meeting was recorded by Falls Area Community Television, located at One Hospital Court, Bellows Falls, Vermont. If you would like a copy of the meeting, our phone number is eight zero two four six three one six one three, or email us at fact eight ten at gmail dot com. Falls Area Community TV, keeping government honest.